Everyone, I'd like to welcome you all to the DeKalb County Central United School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, November 24th, 2025. I'd like you all stand, if you're able, to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie, could you take roll call, please?
I'm Valerie Armstrong.
Present.
Tony Baker.
Present.
Ray Lance.
Present.
Tony O'Neal.
Present.
Thank you, Angie. Tonight, we typically begin with presentations, but we do not have any presentations this evening. So we will move on to Item E, which is Adopt and Amend Agenda. Do I have a motion from the board?
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item F is the Consent Agenda. This includes Items F1 through F5. This is Board Minutes from October. Financial Report, Claims, Personnel, and Field Trips. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. When will we have the 2026 budget that we can review as in the financial format?
I don't know. I'm not understanding what you mean by financial format. Sorry.
I'd like to do the financial report for the funds.
Well, we're in 1782 period right now, so as soon as I get a 1782 back approving our budget, I will begin the line items. Is that what you're asking for, like the line items?
Yeah.
Yeah. As soon as 1782 is approved by the state, I will begin line items. So hopefully December or January. Should be December.
Well, we have that possibly then for the board meeting?
Yeah, that's what I meant. I'm sorry. I should hopefully have the start of it by the December board meeting, line items.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item G is Donations.
All right. In the packet, you'll see just a laundry list of donations. Once again, an outpouring of support from our community to support a wide array of schools and activities in our district. So just briefly, I'll just touch upon donations at the middle school from Best Deal Auto Sales, Lassus Auburn, Arise Tax, the Spencervale Order of the Eastern Star, various different donations for jerseys for the robotics team, $500 donation to the Media Center, donation for a spook and stroll activity that took place at the middle school. We had from our innovation coach, $100 from the Martha Lambert family at James R. Watson Elementary School for, to help with the robotics coaching of Jennifer Kaler to cover costs of new team shirts. We had another one from James R. Watson, a donation from the First United Methodist Church donating 89 new winter hats and 97 new pairs of gloves, since winter is right around the corner. We have a memo for a donation from Aubrey Rutherford, our food service director, received a donation from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 97 of $800 to help with negative lunch account balances, and that helps out some of our most needy families in the community. I believe $200 to be applied at each of our four elementary schools. You'll see just a listing of different donations to our high school in October, November, supporting everything from the band to the theater, to baseball, to family, career, and community, the general fund at the high school, FFA, and just a laundry list of different individuals and entities supporting, from Jeremiah Roberts, Hoegberg Orthodontics, Kerry, a global real estate, American Endowment Foundation, Classic City Signs, Nucor on a couple different occasions, Fork and Fiddle, DABBA, Auburn Main Street, and Auburn Blue Collar Vending, Covington Box and Packaging. And then lastly, but certainly not the least, a couple of donations to Waterloo Elementary from Nucor Insulated Panel and Nucor Building Systems to give the kids at Waterloo Polar Express experience at the local cinema in Auburn. So all expenses paid. So lots to talk about, lots of great contributions by different people and entities in our community. A big thank you to them.
That's wonderful. Yes, thank you to all of our members of the community and businesses that support our schools.
The list from month to month seems to be getting longer. Is there something that we're doing to promote that, or are we just getting lucky?
I don't know if getting better at asking, maybe. I think there's a combination. Some donations run through the foundation, the DeKalb Central Foundation, and other times they run through the district. And so it's a combination thereof. I think maybe we're just at a higher level of the donations coming through the district at this time.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Item H is the Report of the Superintendent. H1 is DHS and DVA Instructional Paraprofessional Plan.
All right. At the beginning of, well, I guess would have been late last year, moving into the summer, we looked at creating our own DeKalb Virtual Academy to support students in grades six through 12. And so we've had a very successful launch of that program. Our Director, Justin Lees, has done a nice job incorporating that program in with his duties at CHOICE, and CHOICE is our high school alternative program where students, up to 60 students, take advantage of the CHOICE program that Justin also leads. To date, we have 45 students who have enrolled in our DeKalb Virtual Academy. We have seven middle schoolers, and the rest are high school students, and I think that's probably the number that we really want to see, a very small number of middle school. And we probably knew we'd see a higher number in our high school setting. A reminder to the board that each of the enrollments in the DeKalb Virtual Academy is funded at 85%, the regular ADM rate. But I'm very well convinced that the majority of these students, we would have lost to some other online programming had we not created this programming ourselves. So I appreciate the board's support in creating the Virtual Academy. Appreciate those involved, like Justin and others, in making it a success to date. This recommendation is really an example of that success. So for your consideration for tonight, we're looking to add a new 35-hour-per-week instructional support paraprofessional. It's a hybrid learning position to support the CHOICE Academy and the DeKalb Virtual Academy, along with the new position seeking approval to restructure to existing paraprofessional positions that currently exist to 35 hours per week to ensure consistent staffing levels aligned to student need and program demands. So ultimately, we're looking to increase the level of paraprofessional structure, a request of 41 additional hours. And so it's not like one paraprofessional is entirely responsible for working with the DeKalb Virtual Academy. These pairs can work with both CHOICE students and the Virtual Academy. And as we see our numbers in the Virtual Academy continue to rise, we're going to need more individuals or more hours available to be able to work with those students and those parents to guide them through the online portion of the DeKalb Virtual Academy. So at this time, I would just ask for the board's consideration to be able to move forward with this restructure at the academy and to help provide the support that Justin and the other pairs need at the location to best meet the needs of our students.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. This time, I'll ask for a motion. I'll make a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So we're going to add a total of 41 hours. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
So how many, how many students do we have between the two programs, being CHOICE and Virtual, if we're going to share some of those hours?
Well, the DeKalb Virtual Academy to date has 45, is what I'm showing. And Justin, I'm going to look to you as far as CHOICE.
We've added, oh, well, with DeKalb Virtual, we added two today.
Oh, we're 47.
CHOICE, setting at 29 in the morning, again, 22 in the afternoon.
And how many total do we have then?
Forty-seven in Virtual, and that would be 51 CHOICE.
No, how many total paraprofessionals? Sorry.
It's Justin and three would be a total of three paraprofessionals.
Will be. Will be. Will be a total.
Once, we still have to post based on their approval and then hire.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. Item H2, the 2026 DMS Special Olympics Indiana Polar Plunge.
This is probably something that board members are interested, could probably contact Mrs. Weishardt at the middle school and participate if you'd like. DeKalb Middle School seeks the board's approval to participate in and host the 2026 Special Olympics Indiana Polar Plunge Cool School Challenge, a statewide event supporting more than 19,000 athletes with intellectual disabilities. We are honored that DeKalb Middle School has been selected as one of very few schools in Indiana chosen to host this signature event, reflecting our strong commitment to inclusion and community engagement. The Polar Plunge provides students and staff a unique opportunity to stand in support of individuals with intellectual disabilities while fostering school unity, leadership, and empathy. This experience goes beyond a single event. It builds awareness, celebrates differences, and allows our students to model courage and compassion within our community. So the event will take place at DeKalb Middle School campus during the school week, coordinated in partnership with Special Olympics Indiana. The organization will provide the pool, staff support, insurance, and safety resources. School personnel, including our school nurse, SRO, will over, I think our SRO might be participating in that, too. I'm not sure, but could be a possibility, will oversee the safety measures. All participants will complete the approved Special Olympics waiver, which has been reviewed and cleared by our DeKalb Central legal team. Hosting the Polar Plunge is both an honor and a powerful opportunity for our students to connect service with action. This partnership with Special Olympics Indiana embodies DeKalb Middle School's mission to develop character, compassion, and leadership in every student. So for the board's consideration this evening.
All right. At this time, I'll ask the board for a motion.
To approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this just an event, not a fundraiser?
Just an event.
Do we know, do we have a date yet?
I don't think she has a date yet. I think she's waiting for Special Olympics to, I think they get all of their participants in order, and then they schedule that host date. But I know Kerry will be sure to communicate that information out.
Well, if I'm available, I'm in. Challenging the other board members and the people sitting at this table to join in.
Get that in a minute, Angie.
Bold that one, please.
Nice. She'll love to hear that.
I'm in.
Any further discussion? Or participants?
I'm in.
Oh, we heard it.
Oh, gosh. Nervous.
I love it.
Can't be any worse than going up to Hamilton Lake and jumping.
I hear you.
How deep is this pool?
It's not that deep.
Probably a dunk tank.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
It's not a pool. You can stand up.
I'll cheer you on. I'll be there to cheer you on.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
My granddaughter may not be thrilled with it.
Item H3 is DeKalb Virtual Academy parchment instruction agreement.
For the board's consideration from Mr. Wagner at the high school, the instructure agreement for DeKalb Virtual Academy to use parchment for all student transcript requests. This service is provided at no cost to current DeKalb Virtual Academy students as it is paid for schools by the Indiana Commission for Higher Learning. Students may create a parchment account and request transcripts to be sent to post-secondary institutions free of charge. This allows for students to have transcripts sent for admission and scholarship purposes when deciding upon their goals after high school. As outlined in the agreement, and I attached the agreement if you wanted to look at that, students who are alumni of DeKalb Virtual Academy will also request transcripts at a cost of $4.95 per transcript, which is a state-established fee once a student is no longer actively enrolled in high school. There is no cost to the district for adding or maintaining parchment access to the DVA. This agreement is the same that has been established for the past many years at DeKalb High School. We just needed to bring the Virtual Academy into the fold. So for the board's consideration this evening.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And passes. Okay. Item H4 is the Affiliation Agreement Concerning Placement of Indiana University Student.
That's me. This evening, I'm seeking the board's approval to enter into an affiliation agreement between DeKalb County Central United School District and the trustees of Indiana University. This is a repeat performance for us, but it's lapsed. We go about every three years, and we haven't had an IU Bloomington. We have not had a student teacher for several years, so it was time to renew this agreement with the university and get it on record, and maybe we'll get one. Bloomington's a pretty far placement for IU to come up here in the corner, but once in a while, we get them. So the key terms of the agreement were listed in there for you. There is no direct cost to the district to partake in this agreement, and any other incidental cost would be at the expense of Indiana University. And so just respectfully recommending that you approve the affiliation agreement between DeKalb Central Schools and Indiana University, so that we can assign student teachers when and if that happens.
Thank you, Lori. At this time, I'll ask the board for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we currently have an active agreement with Purdue as well?
No. And I don't, I don't get student teachers from Purdue. I can't even, we do from Purdue Fort Wayne. We have an agreement with Purdue Fort Wayne. I guess that was wrong when I said, no, I was thinking big campus, but, but we do with Purdue Fort Wayne. And we do get, we do get student teachers from Purdue Fort Wayne.
Do we have one with trying still? We, I know we have a lot of those.
We have a lot of those.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. Item H5, the Acceptance of the 2025-2026 Digital STEM Integration Grant.
I'm bringing this on behalf of Kelly Hudson. Kelly is one of our innovation tech coaches. I think I mentioned it in my board update, but she would like to let you know that she's very pleased to inform you that our district has been awarded the 2025-26 STEM Integration Grant in the amount of $22,200 for the fourth year in a row. This competitive grant is going to support our continued growth and implementation of the Portrait of the Baron competencies through PBL, Project-Based Learning across grades K through 12. So it's district-wide. She shared with you that the grant funds will be used to purchase materials and supplies necessary for the design and implementation of high-quality PBL units and provide leadership coaching and professional learning opportunities for administrators and instructional coaches who are leading this work. So this evening, I respectfully, again, asking that you support this acceptance of this grant.
Thank you, Lori.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to the board.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you.
Item H6, DHS Old Uniforms of No Value.
Yeah, I'll bring this for Athletic Director Chris Riker. Our unified football program was going through all our closets at the high school and discovered some more old uniforms that they would like to request the board deem of no value so they can give out for fundraising or just whatever they want to do, either discard or try to sell them, give them away, whatever. So I would just ask the board to deem these uniforms that are several years old, of no use to the athletic department, all purchased the ECA funds to deem them of no value so that the athletic department can dispose of or give away.
Thanks, Mark. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. This now brings us to item H7, which is our lease bond hearing. At this time, I will request a motion from the board to pause our regular board meeting to hold our project and preliminary hearing for a proposed bond project. This time, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Hearing is now open. The next item on the agenda for the board is to hold a project and preliminary hearing on the proposed bond project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At this hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. The first preliminary determination hearing was held on October 28th, 2025. At this time, I will ask that Eric Long from ICE Miller explain the purpose of this hearing.
Good evening, members of the board administration. Good to see you once again. As President Armstrong mentioned, we were here about a month ago at the October board meeting to present upon the projects, and at that time, there was no action to be taken, just presentation and public comments. So checking two different statutory boxes this evening pursuant to Title 20 of the Indiana Code, for a school corporation can finance more than $1 million for any school, construction, renovation, et cetera, there must be a hearing in which the projects and the benefits of those projects to the community are going to be presented. And then similarly pursuant to Title 6 of the Indiana Code, any school operation must hold two public hearings, and at the second of those hearings, that being this evening, consider a resolution for a preliminary determination to enter into one or more lease agreements to issue bonds for these projects. Again, first hearing was a month ago. This represents the second of those two hearings. Have you entertained any questions you may have?
And this is for the GO bond and, or is this just the project bond for 2026?
This is just for 2026 and beyond. So at the October hearing, we had the final bond resolution for the GO bond. So this is just to talk about the BAC and the PAC.
So the, the impact to the debt services account for the GO bond does not go into effect until 2026? Is that correct, or?
That's correct.
So when will the effect for this bond go into effect? 2026 or 2027?
So this is just the first step in the process. And if things go according to the timeline, if we were to issue bonds as soon as calendar year 2026, the first opportunity to levy would be in 2027 and beyond. I don't want to steal Stiefel's thunder, our banker, Luke Root is here as well, and he, I believe, is going to have some pretty detailed charts that will help paint that picture as well. But just to bring it back from a legal perspective, we do not have the ability to levy property taxes until the year beyond in which bonds are issued.
Okay.
If there are any questions, then I'll pass the torch back to President Armstrong. I want to ask Mr. Ron to talk about the projects.
Thank you so much. Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Teeters about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
Thank you, Valerie. DeKalb Central Schools remains committed to providing exceptional learning experiences and opportunities for nearly 3,600 students that we serve. This initiative represents a continuation of that commitment, an investment in our students, our schools, and the future of our community. The proposed improvements to the Performing Arts Center and the construction of a new Baron Activity Center, both connected to DeKalb High School on the 612 campus, are the result of years of thoughtful planning and collaboration. The Performing Arts Center renovation will modernize decades-old choir, band, and theater spaces and includes the addition of a new dedicated band instructional area, enhancements that will elevate the performing arts experience for students across the district. The Baron Activity Center will provide much-needed, safe, and flexible space to support the wide range of student activities that enrich learning and growth. Together, these improvements will benefit students throughout DeKalb Central Schools. These priorities were shaped through extensive engagement with our partners at Garmin Miller, and most importantly, through the meaningful work of the Operations Committee and the Facilities and Operations Advisory Group. Over the past two years, these groups, composed of dedicated community members, school board members, administrators, and staff, have provided invaluable insight, feedback, and forward-thinking guidance. Their involvement ensures that this initiative reflects the needs, values, and aspirations of the community we proudly serve. This proposal is more about than just facilities. It is about creating safe, modern, and dynamic environments where students can learn, create, perform, and thrive. It builds upon previous investments and continues our shared legacy of responsible planning and community-supported improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We will now hear from Derek Luth with our architectural firm from Garmin Miller about how the proposed project meets the needs as just described.
Yep. She'll, she'll get you. What do you want? Do you want the video first?
Um, we can play, play either the video or the slide.
Let's, let's throw the video, and then we'll go through his PowerPoint. She'll, she'll get you, what do you want? Do you want the video first?
Um, we can play, play either the video or the slide.
Let's, let's throw the video. And then we'll go through his PowerPoint.
Alright, so hello, my name is Derek Luth. I'm one of the directors and architectural designers for Garmin Miller. Um, I just want to take the opportunity to just thank everybody um and just let you know how grateful we are to work with a community that cares about its staff and its students so deeply. Over the next few minutes, I'm gonna try to explain these two projects in further detail and answer any question the school board has for the preliminary design mark. So beginning in the Performing Arts Center, the project consists of both interior renovations as well as a new addition near the front entrance of the high school. The renovations focus on revitalizing the existing corridors and practice spaces, making them more functional, flexible for the needs of the program. The addition creates new dedicated space for both band practice as well as providing support, restrooms, dressing rooms, and associated equipment storage for the arts as a whole. The exterior construction of the addition is a balance between matching the existing brick facade and the banding on your existing campus, while also creating a new prominent presence at the campus entrance with new signage and modern design elements. Few prominent design features include the upper clerestory glazing at the perimeter of the addition, as well as a new dedicated covered entrance for the students' events and loading needs of the program itself. The renovation scope updates the existing interior finishes in the corridors, green rooms, dressing rooms, as well as creating a new communal lounge for students to use during the school day as well as special events. Also a part of the renovation, we're updating both the vocal and theatrical rooms, infilling the existing recessed flooring elements to create accessible, flexible spaces for the future. Inside of each of these spaces, we're also reconfiguring the existing interior walls and programming to create new offices, practice rooms, and storage rooms to fit the current and future needs of the students and the staff. As part of the new addition, we're adding new group restrooms, a new dressing room, and inter- internal circulation corridor for new dedicated entrance. This area will also house equipment storage for varying sizes and needs of the band program. The addition will feature consistent finishes and wayfinding from the renovation through the new addition as well. At the heart of the new addition is a new bandroom with four thousand five hundred square feet of flexible rehearsal space. Various teaching walls allow for this room to be used for different sized groups and configurations as well. The new bandroom also includes solo, duet, ensemble practice rooms for flexible use, a director's office, and independent storage equipment for music library and color guard as well as the band equipment itself. Moving on to the Baron Activity Center, the proposed design is a new thirty-three thousand square foot addition to the northwest corner of the existing high school. Consisting of a twenty-six thousand square foot activity center with connecting Hall of Fame corridor and new entrances at both the high school and the activity center for daily access and special event access. The construction of the center consists of a pre-engineered metal building with exterior brick and insulated metal panels with an end wall feature element at the north side and clear stories on both the east and the west sides of the building. The new entrances and connecting corridor are conventionally framed and clad in a complimentary metal panel to the activity center itself. New canopies, these red accent features and signage will create a new elevated focal point at the heart of the campus. On the interior of the Baron Activity Center is a new lobby consisting of concessions and event boards and a glazing for visibility into the activity center itself. Within the activity center, you can see clear span, pre-engineered metal building structure, which allows for open and flexible use of the space for multiple different uses and activities. Court marking, wayfinding, um, and walking tracks will allow for further flexibility for different groups to use the space at the same time. The event center also houses support spaces, including locker rooms, restrooms, equipment storage, and ancillary spaces for both the center and the greater campus as well. The last element of the new addition is a Hall of Fame corridor. This not only connects the high school to the activity center, but also creates an elevated experience for students, staff, and visitors as they use the space. At this time, I'd like to ask the board if they have any thoughts or questions on the preliminary.
Derek, I had a question. Um, I believe we discussed this before, but I know you just didn't mention it, but um, this new addition with the, of Baron Activity Center, does that allow the reconfiguration of the HVAC to the oxygen with that?
Yes, that will be part of it.
So just wanted the public to know that because that's a very hot.
Yeah.
Hot topic.
We'll have air with this project, yes.
Thank you.
The Athletic Center is twenty-six thousand square feet, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And so when you, when you're kind of comparing the overall square footage in that twenty-six thousand square feet, that's subtracting all that support space, so the locker rooms, the restrooms, um, the storage, the concourse area as well. So those are kind of separated out from that twenty-six hundred square feet.
What's the total, man? Total square?
Total is thirty-three thousand square feet overall.
Discussion? I personally really enjoy the video. I don't know when the technology started for you guys to be able to actually see and like feel like you're in that space, but that's amazing and amazing for you guys to be able to share with us.
No problem. Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you Derek.
Derek.
Thanks Derek.
Okay, we will now hear from Luke Brugman from Stifel, our bond underwriter, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as the information from, about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Alright, good evening, Luke Brugman with Stifel. Uh, we serve as bond underwriter for the school corporation. These slides should look pretty familiar because they are the exact same slides that we walked through last month. So if you, first thing we will start with is school corporation outstanding debt payments. You have three bond issues outstanding, the two thousand twenty-one bonds, the two thousand twenty-three bonds, and the two thousand twenty-four bonds. Uh, as we discussed last month, you have debt falling off uh, beginning in two thousand twenty-six, uh, again in two thousand twenty-nine, again in two thousand thirty-one. So we've really been able to repay this debt back, set you up to uh, be able to fund this project without really increasing the, the taxes among the community. This does not include the twenty-five GO bonds that were just sold. Uh, we'll get to that here in a second. Those closed December eleventh. They have been sold, but since they haven't closed yet, I opted not to change the presentation. Uh, so the next slide is the school corporation's current debt service levy. This is essentially the ask of the community in a dollar amount to make those principal and interest payments. Uh, it's really just factoring in some miscellaneous revenue and cash on hand. Otherwise, you'll see it really follows the same footprint as that previous slide. When we factor in the two thousand twenty-five GO bonds, that is in blue here, again, you'll see that hits the levy beginning in two thousand twenty-six, and then we leave capacity beginning in two thousand twenty-seven for this project. In green would be the thirty million dollar project, thirty point eight million dollar total borrowing uh, for this project. And the goal here would be that we're going to maintain the two thousand twenty-six debt service levy. This would go out twenty years, which is longer than where your current debt is, but uh, and I think we've talked about potential refinancing that uh, on previous bond issues, but given that this is twenty years, uh, this would give you the ability to still come back and refinance that at a later date, typically in the eight to ten year period. We're assuming an interest rate of five percent. If you sold a twenty-year bond issue today, it's in the three seventy-five to four percent range. We're also assuming that you issue all thirty point eight million at one time. Typically with these projects, you don't need all of the funds on day one, so we don't want you to pay interest on those funds on day one. So we may issue a smaller portion to kind of kickstart the funding of that project uh, and then come back at a later date. And that would really help reduce the capitalized interest amount that we'll show on the next page. Uh, last thing I'll mention here too is not only do we want to ma- maintain that twenty-six debt service levy, but we also want to ma- maintain capacity for future needs. We know this is going to take care of a lot of your needs. We all, we also know that there's a lot of needs that just are going to come up over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So these are the maximum legal parameters. Again, these are the same parameters that we showed at the la- last month's hearing. The only difference is that these numbers will be in the resolution set forth in front of you tonight. These are maximums. We can come down from them, but once they are set, we cannot go above them. So the total borrowing amount or par amount of the bonds would be uh, thirty million eight hundred thousand. Uh, estimated cost of issuance, capitalized interest, and underwriters discount of one million two hundred and sixty thousand, uh, leaving total uh, proceeds available for the project of the hard and soft project cost of twenty-nine million five hundred and forty thousand. Estimated interest rate range of two to seven percent. Again, uh, we've run everything at five percent, which is uh, more than a full percent higher than where market rates are at today. Maximum term of the bond issue is twenty years, uh, and that calculates to a total interest cost of nineteen million eight hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Maximum annual payment that you can make in any given year on this specific project is four million. And if you simply divide that by the school corporation's net assessed value, you get a maximum tax rate impact of point two zero nine five cents. However, that is not factoring in any debt falling off that we showed on the prior page to factor that in. There's a zero dollar tax increase over the two thousand twenty-six debt service levy. There's a couple other ratios down there at the bottom. Uh, the first one is the school corporation's maximum annual payments as a percentage of your net assessed value is point three six percent. And then the second one is the direct and overlapping debt as a percentage of, of your net assessed value. That's just taking into account the county, township, library, school corporation, all of the property tax debt uh, of any municipal entity that, that your taxpayer would pay as a percentage of your net assessed value. So again, you'll see those numbers in, in the resolution uh, tonight, so I wanted to make sure that I went over them. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board or administration has or, or go anything, go over anything again if it would be helpful.
The maximum annual payments, four million, is that what we're planning on from a budget standpoint then?
No, it'll, it'll be, if I go back on this, I always mess it up.
Um, she can go back for you.
Uh, I made that mistake before.
Me too.
But if you look down kind of like twenty forty and beyond, the, the number's really close, going to be closer to likely about three million dollars. We always kind of build in, make, add some cushion there to be conservative just in case anything changes. Between now and when we actually issue the bonds, this is really the, the first step, or I guess maybe the second step in the legal process. Uh, so we always want to leave some cushion in there to not constrain the school if anything changes.
So if they were, I'm just throwing out hypotheticals, if we were able to have a fundraiser that raised a million dollars, we could apply that plus the three million that we got to the maximum of four million dollars.
Derek, do you want to a- answer that about fundraisers? I don't, I don't know how that, how that works actually.
Yeah, we'll go back to the legal question. It is a good one too, because what, the presentation that we see here and the materials that are for your consideration do not account for anything like donations, grants, et cetera. Um, from a legal perspective, donations, grants, anything of that nature do not need to go into the total project cost. Many reasons for that, because in many cases, um, pledges, donations may be pledged over time. They may not be in hand by the time you have hearings like we're having tonight, right? Because this is just the first step in a very long process. Um, and so donations could certainly be applied in the future. It would not impact what you see here, but it's something to, to more directly answer your question, we could certainly apply future donations, pledges, et cetera, depending upon how any donor um, verbalizes that particular pledge. We could apply that to this project, for sure.
Interest income, same?
I'm sorry?
Interest income could be used as the same?
Yes, um, that, that actually goes to what Mr. Brugman mentioned as far as not doing the full borrowing amount upfront. If the construction process is going to play out over one, two, three years, um, there is some strategy to borrowing only the dollars that you need so that you can invest those and maximize the interest earnings and not have to rebate anything back to the IRS, for example. Um, so that's something we, we talked through when we get further on down the line, closer to the time of the bond sale, is looking at when are the construction draws actually going to be needed? And what would be some potential investment vehicles um, that are permissible by Indiana state law and according to our rating agencies um, to try to be able to earn interest dollars on those bond proceeds.
So if, if we issued the, let's just say we issued the entire bond in January of twenty twenty-six, and we started the performing arts project, and we waited for a year to start the athletic complex, none of this would change.
Correct.
Other than we would have money that we would earn interest on, and then?
That's right. And actually, as you look at these graphs, like what, what we're not doing this evening is finalizing that particular graph. As Mr. Brugman mentioned, all we're doing is studying the project maximums. Um, so there could come a time when we get actually to market um, to further fine tune exactly how many years of repayment are going to occur. It's just that the maximum earning of laws, twenty years, so that's what we're showing just for sake of these graphs this evening.
And I'll, one more thing too. So on the max annual payment, uh, that also gives you the ability, if you wanted to shorten it up twenty years to eighteen years or seventeen, your payments are going to be a little bit higher out there, so, so we do leave some flexibility for that in case that wanted to be shortened up later on.
But then, again, if we bond the full amount in twenty twenty-six, that full bonding amount would affect the taxes. Not necessarily our borrowing, but the issuance of the bond would affect the total taxes, right?
When you say it affects the total taxes, tell me what you mean by that.
So if, if we only took eighteen million out in twenty twenty-six and we took twelve million out in twenty twenty-seven, right, our tax rate would still be the same as if we took out the thirty million in year one.
Yeah, so the, the difference would be if we issued all thirty point eight on, on day one, we'd likely have to have some capitalized interest because those first couple payments, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we've talked about that before, the capitalized interest, essentially uh, the bond holder needs to get paid interest on, on the bonds that are due, so it's either coming from the school corporation's levy or from, from bond proceeds. So if we did the full thirty point eight, we'd have to take some of the bond proceeds and, and use capitalized interest to, to make that. If we can split it up, and I think your example is twelve and eighteen, if we're only paying on interest on twelve million, that interest cost is going to be less. So we likely wouldn't have to use capitalized interest. So then at that point, we could either downsize the, the total borrowing amount or allow for more dollars to flow to the project fund. And that's just something that we're going to have to, uh, once we get closer to that, that point, we'll have to work with, with administration and the construction team to see exactly how much do you need and, and what is the, the right approach? Do you want to have extra interest earnings, uh, if interest rates are still high? Or does it make more sense to not borrow as much upfront to reduce that capitalized interest amount?
And a couple of things I would point out, great job fellows, thank you. As I've worked with Luke, um, as you look at this graph, if you look at the difference between twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight, you see our existing gray bar debt drop considerably. Then you look to twenty thirty-one, when the twenty twenty-three bond drops off, you see it drop even more. Couple of things to keep in mind. Sorry, I know we're way up here right now, and I apologize if we try to, that's why I love these guys, they, they bring it down to reality for me. A couple of things to keep in mind. Number one, we're, we're going to lose that debt, which is going to help us with our, with the needed tax rate for debt service. The other thing to keep in mind is the GO bond you guys just approved had about one point nine million dollars for me to use for deferred maintenance, which will also protect my tax rate for ops and would allow me to funnel more to the debt service. All of that is said, my strategy has been protect our tax levy and protect the rate for our taxpayers as much as possible. The timing of this was really good from the standpoint of we're losing a bunch of debt in twenty twenty-eight, and we're losing a big chunk in twenty thirty-one. If we can space out the financing, which it sounds like we're going to be able to do as I, as I consult with Garmin Miller, um, and I'm not, I'm not putting, you know, what is it, the cart for the horse here, um, an FCI, just trying to get some opinions from, from construction companies, we will be able to tier the money coming in, which will also protect our debt service rate. We won't have to take the whole thirty million like you're saying in twenty twenty-six, so we can keep the rate as palpable as possible for our taxpayers. I, I have approached this project um, out of necessity, and I've coupled that with um, taxpayer paying. And I don't want that. I don't want to raise the tax rates. Um, obviously, SCA one is forcing our hand a little bit there as we look at property tax reform, but everything we're doing, I know this graph gets a little But everything we're doing, I know this graph gets a little tricky to look at, but if you can focus on that gray bar and see how it's dropping in twenty-eight and thirty-one, that's huge. That's, that's two million dollars worth of debt service payments that will drop off in twenty twenty-nine. And it's another two million dollars of payments that will drop off in twenty thirty-one that we can then, you know, focus on. We're obviously going to have our payments with this new bond, but that won't make the rate explode as it could if we didn't have debt dropping off, if that makes sense. Sorry, I hope I didn't, I, I don't even like talking when these guys are up here because they're, they're far more knowledgeable than me, but I did want to point that out as my strategy as we approach these two bonds. It's, it's really important to remember that GOBonds had one point nine million dollars for deferred maintenance, which means I won't be using money from the ops fund, which means twenty-seven budget. Hopefully, I'll be able to pull back a little bit on ops and, and, and what I'm asking the state for in terms of levy. Um, and that can be deferred into the, in the debt service. So the rate will hopefully stay steady as his graph is showing you. I don't know how I did there, Luke. I, I always look to you guys for mine.
So in essence, we got a flexibility to pivot in case economic conditions aren't favorable. We can extend the terms or alternate the terms when we get to that point if we do divide it up into two bonds. So it really gives you flexibility.
Absolutely. And we, and we still have debt capacity past next year. That's the other key with this.
And it helps keep, that'll help you give another lever to keep the, the rate steady.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Luke and Eric. Okay, we will now begin the public hearing. I did not have anyone sign up um in the hallway um for the specific hearing, but if you would like to speak, I ask you to just come up to the podium if you have anything to say, the audience.
It was the video, I bet. The video just sent them all over the head. My favorite part of the video was watching Josh and Chris. They're two of our performing arts people.
Yes.
It's like the old movie Smile.
Feeding smiles.
The grin was ear to ear.
But the directors were both female.
Damn, that's a tough crowd.
They still smiled. They still smiled.
I will also point out that Chris started to get a little bored when we started talking about the money. I could tell. You're a little bored.
All right. Well, thank you all too who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and your interest in our projects and the future of our community. At this time, I will ask for a motion to end our project hearing and resume our regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion in the hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, we will now begin the next portion of our meeting um, to discuss the project resolution. I will ask Eric to come back up to the podium.
Okay, yes, as promised, there would be board action this evening. So this is the first of three resolutions, as you can see on the screens here in this room, um, related to the approval of the project. This project resolution, um, this is pursuant to Title Twenty. Um, again, whenever a school corporation is planning to finance more than one million dollars in any project, um, this resolution is required. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and establishes the total project cost as well as the tax impact, which is what you saw with Mr. Brugman slides a few moments ago regarding all the project maximums.
Okay, thank you. At this time, could I have a motion to adopt the project resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. Next, could I have a, I guess, do I ask you to turn it back over? I'm sorry. All right, um, next I will have the preliminary determination of the resolution required when a school corporation is planning to finance more than a certain amount for a given project. It contains the total project costs, maximum annual payment and lease term and other financial terms such as estimated principal amount of the taxpayer.
That was Eric's part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's okay. He might be able to add something.
Eric, do you have anything else to describe?
To a sense that this is, as I mentioned before the hearing, this is the resolution regarding Title Six, which is a separate statute. A lot of overlapping information, as you mentioned, it talks about the financial terms of the project.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the preliminary determination resolution? I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And next, Eric? Reimbursement.
This is just a reservation of rights for federal tax purposes. It is very common that between the time we have hearings and the time we get to closing on the bonds, there's some other work, preliminary work that needs to be done, things like architect fees, moving of the dirt, utility work, et cetera. Um, and so in order to allow flexibility to basically kind of temporarily pay for those expenses, this resolution basically, um, again, for federal tax purposes, grants the ability of a school corporation to front those costs before closing on the bond issue and then to reimburse yourselves out of the bonds for those preliminary costs. Just a reservation of rights.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to, to adopt the reimbursement resolution?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, that concludes our agenda items. Um, this will bring us to our miscellaneous portion of the meeting. Um, I'll open that up to our board members if you have anything this evening.
I got a few. Is the concession stand done yet?
No, not quite.
Very close.
Thought the blacktop was.
Had the asphalt down.
Yeah.
The fences are down, so it looks, looks good.
Yeah, it looks good. So basically, we'll be done in December.
Yeah, I'd say we're at ninety-five percent right now, in one percentage.
No, it looks good. Project looks good. Progress on the five to ten year plan?
We're getting there. We're, we're working on it. Matt's um created the spreadsheet. We're working with the maintenance department, um, working with Garmin Miller and hopefully have something at the next FOGE meeting to present, to look over, to see where we're, what everybody thinks of it.
Again, that, that's really the contingency on the bond. We talked about that in the committee meeting.
Yep.
That was one of the things that we had to have in place. And I'm not saying it has to be perfect. It's not why I said it. We just got to have a plan because, again, I, I think there's been some great discussion here tonight that the committee has helped us all compromise, get an overall project goal that we all agree upon. I think the facilities that we're asking for are very nice. I think we've compromised on price by different design structures. Um, and I think the GOBonds is also going to meet some of the other project needs that we first talked about in twenty twenty-three when we started that discussion. Uh, but again, having that plan so that we can explain it to the general public, or they can go to the website if they have questions, is just crucial. I think it's crucial to the overall progress that we've made in the last couple of years that, that progress keeps moving forward. So with the buy-in of the community.
I, I would say, and Matt, correct me if, but you think I'm wrong. Um, as I've looked at the spreadsheet we've created, I think we're pretty much there from our standpoint. If, if it's done, I'm happy to share it with the board to look over. I was just kind of holding back until we had the FOGE meeting to let everybody give me some input. Um, but big ticket items, HVAC, things like that, they're, they're all completed and all part of it. Roofing. So I'll, I'll share that with the board. I'll just put it in, I'll put it in the board packet of this month, so you can take a look at that. And I'll email you all just to remind you that, when I have it there.
The next facilities meeting is Thursday, December fourth at six P M.
Right.
So again, with that said, right, we've, we've got to start it. If I remember right, I have to pull the spreadsheet up. It's been a while. I think we had eighty-five million dollars worth of projects to complete in twenty twenty-two that we started with.
Yeah, somewhere around there, I believe.
And from twenty twenty, when we approve this next bond, from twenty twenty-three to current, we'll have reinvested sixty-two million dollars in.
Yeah, we've, we've taken a huge chunk of it away. We've, like you said, we've changed a lot of the plans we've had. We're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can. Um, that's just kind of where we're at.
The, the, the biggest part though is we're, we're not done.
No.
We'll never be done.
That list, that list will continue to grow, right?
Absolutely.
Our, what's the plan to keep the ball rolling and keep our facilities up? Cause now we've, we've added square footage that we have to maintain, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, we'll see. Oh, last but not least, um, any more thought to a sign or some kind of posting for our community business boosters? We talked about?
Yeah, I think we talked about that at facilities, correct?
Might have been facilities that we talked about.
And I think, um, each of our activities promotes their sponsors kind of in different ways. They'll list them in their programs. If, if you go over to tennis right now, they have banners for all the sponsors. And so I think we'll come together and just continue that discussion to see if we want to do something more uniform across all of our activities so that we're not just, you know, a hit and miss kind of. But we've had some, some additional discussion on just we have a lot of donations, we have a lot of sponsorships and making sure that whatever we do, we certainly appreciate all the different sponsors we have, like the donations we, we received tonight from so many different people and, and businesses. We just want to make sure that we're doing it in a uniform manner, that we don't just have a lot of one offs depending on the activity or the, or the acti- the, the, the team or the uh activity that's going on at the time. So continued discussion on that and what that's going to look like moving forward.
There's just, a lot of people have serious pride in knowing that their employer is helping support the school district. And today especially, the younger generation, that's one of the first things that they look at before they go to work somewhere, is whether or not they're involved in the community. And if they already know they're involved in the community because they saw it at the schools, it'll make that much easier for us to retain the kids that we're educating in our own community. And that's going to be huge because we can't keep losing everybody in Indianapolis. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving break. Phew, teachers need a break. Everybody does. So, uh, drive safe, eat light, come back next week, please. Uh, winter activities, I try to name them all, but man, in the wintertime, it's hang on, here they come. So we've got fine arts, practical arts, sports, it's happening. So just look online because sometimes they change because of the weather. Hopefully no fog.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that. Uh, musical Elf coming up, December fifth, sixth and seventh. So I'm curious to see how this is going to be. You know Jed, he always has something up his sleeve. So if you're not busy that next weekend, get out and see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, on the facilities, I have to say, I'm impressed. Uh, it's not a pull barn and it's not over the top. So in that aspect, I think the design is, is good and solid. Um, again, I think the good, like Tony says, having a plan, getting us out there and communicating to the community, it's, it's going to go well. And, and what people have to remember, this is a result of the operations committee and FOAG, is that a fog? Sorry. Possible. As a result of those committees and that's collaborative effort. So I mean, you know, this is what folks are wanting. And again, uh, to the point, we're not going over the top and it's, again, it's not a pull barn. So I think from that perspective, it's good. Another thing I think everybody should be proud of, especially administration over the last seven years, not only have we lowered the tax rate, but we've taken care of a lot of unfun infrastructure projects over the years that don't get a lot of curb appeal and go on and nobody sees. So I think that's a testament and thankful for everybody involved. Uh, again, as Thanksgiving comes, thankful for all the teachers, uh, staff and, and volunteer students for all you guys do for our kids.
Thank you.
I would just echo that. I'm really proud and thankful today. There's a lot of exciting things going on and I'm just, I'm really excited. So thank you, everybody.
I agree. And, um, also, I know we keep talking about this, um, advisory group, FOGE, FOAG operations, but I, I really want to thank everyone that has given their time over the last couple of years. We have so many different community members that have brought in so much insight and their perspective and their professional opinions and I, I think that it was the right thing to do and have these groups. Um, so if anyone else wants to continue to be involved, um, I, um, ask you to reach out and find out when the meetings are. Um, we usually always post those on social media as well. Um, but anyone's welcome to participate if you have more insight and ideas for, um, our future. I think that would be great. So, um, thank you. And I'll let our administration go now.
I just want, just a shout out to one of our high school teachers, Ashley Johnson. And you heard the news earlier when she was a recipient of the Milken Award, which is a national award um, that seeks out just outstanding teachers. And the significance of that is it's not something that someone applies for. It's just this organization seeks out individuals who, uh, do their best, make a huge impact. And we, we have a lot of great teachers. We're certainly, uh, happy for Ashley and what she has been recognized for. Last Friday evening, the Indiana Department of Education held their Indiana Educational Excellence Awards, um, Friday night downtown. And Mr. Wagner and I had the opportunity to attend that with her and help celebrate that award down. Uh, in Indy, there were only two Milken, um, awardees from the state of Indiana this past year. So congratulations to Ashley. She's doing lots of different things and, uh, certainly proud of her and certainly she represents, you know, really all of our great teachers that we have on our staff and we're, we're glad to see the spotlight on her for what she does for our students. But I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I just want, it's Thanksgiving and, and I, I told Steve, I never get tired of seeing that video and tapping my feet to the music and you know, growing up in this community and, and nearby and, and watching DeKalb, you know, from elementary school all the way. I am so proud and thankful for the commitment and the passion that not only this board has, but our community and even our students. And, and if you think other people aren't watching and, and, and really excited for us, I, I can tell you just, just up the road a, a little bit, it's, it's being talked about and in a way that makes me very proud because we've been sensible and we've been conscientious and we've been transparent and open. And I'm really proud of that. And I, it's going to be a beautiful place.
Geez, you guys all took what I wanted to talk about. So I'll, I'll, I'll stay in that same vein. Um, excuse me, I do really appreciate the support of the board on this project. It's never easy to vote yes when you're bonding thirty million dollars. I get it. It's a big deal. Um, I can't, I'm sure I'd forget people if I started to thank individuals that helped us through this process. It's a big undertaking. I would single out one person. Gina Burr has picked up a ton of my slack as I've worked on this project and many of the other bondings. Um, she keeps our business office running like a clock. And, uh, I can't thank her enough for being my right hand in the business office. But I appreciate the community. Uh, the video is amazing. We're going to have it on our social media. We're going to have boards made that can be out so people can see what's going to happen with this project. Um, nothing but excitement. I don't, I don't know where my wife stands on this. You know, we, we had thought that I would probably retire pretty soon, but, um, I don't think I'm not going to see this project through. I want to see it through. I want to see this happen. Steve and I have been here thirty-three years. This is probably one of the most exciting moments of my career and I thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
One thing to hear here and Mark brought this up in, in the, uh, committee meeting is that, and I, I guess I had to think about it after he said it. Our middle school and high school share a number of facilities. Where other schools, middle school has their facilities and the high school has their facilities. And that's another way that we've been able to, as an overall organization for a long time, been able to control costs. So uh, that's a big benefit for us and that gives us the opportunity to do these things that we're doing now.
Absolutely.
All right, at this time, I'll open it up to the audience. I just have one, um, person that signed up to speak, um, Mr. Humpsing. May I take the podium?
Good evenings.
Good evening, DeKalb Central School Board and Administration. I appreciate this opportunity to speak on a matter that's come to my attention. I'm here to address some statements made by one of the board members during last month's school board meeting. And I have a letter prepared by my attorneys from Beers Mallers, Bax and Salin in Fort Wayne that I'd like to present the board if you would receive it. Detective Sergeant John Helmsing with the Fort Wayne Police Department. I am the direct supervisor of the digital forensics unit there. And I'd like the opportunity to either read or have read this letter into public record due to statements made during last month's meeting, for your preference would be.
You can go ahead and read it.
Dear members of the board of the DeKalb County Central United School District, our firm, Beers Mallers Bax and Salin, represents John J. Helmsing. Mr. Helmsing is a respected law enforcement professional who has spent 30 years in public service and has spent his life building a positive reputation. Mr. Helmsing currently serves as a sergeant with the Fort Wayne Police Department. It's come to our attention that a member of your board of the DeKalb County Central United School District, here, or we're referred to as the board, Greg Lance recently made defamatory statements regarding Mr. Helmsing. Specifically, during the board's public meeting on October 28th, 2025, Mr. Lance made the following public comments. Yes, it was on 11/21/2024, myself, board member Jeff Johnson, board member Tony Baker got emails from a Fort Wayne PD officer with the same last name as our HR director. Also, Mr. Baker got emails to two of his personal emails. Now, they claim that this is a bot attack, ladies and gents. I would think that they would understand who they're attacking because I work and make bots for a living. So the only way that this bot attack, and it came from the person's and source it was, was Mr. Helmsing had to have my email, Jeff Johnson's email, Tony Baker's email, and Tony Baker's personal emails in his contact list. Any IT professional will tell you that hands down. Through these comments, Mr. Lance clearly indicates that Mr. Helmsing committed or somehow orchestrated a cyber attack via email against Mr. Lance, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Baker. And that too, Mr. Helmsing subsequently lied and attempted to wrongfully deflect responsibility for the attack. These accusations are false and completely baseless. Furthermore, Mr. Lance had reason to know the statements were false. In November 2024, malicious email attack was investigated by the city of Fort Wayne and its IT service provider. The investigation revealed that a malicious email had been received by a number of city employees from an external contact which was responsible for the originating email. Accordingly, any malicious emails received by Mr. Lance or other members of the board in November of 2024 are understood to have originated from an external email attack and certainly not from any intentional or malicious conduct by Mr. Helmsing. Mr. Lance's accusations against Mr. Helmsing related to the malicious email attacks, or malicious emails, are completely false and lack any factual basis. Indiana law prohibits defamation which entails making statements that tend so to do harm to the reputation of another as to lower him in estimation of the community or to deter a third person from associated or dealing with him. This is based on Newman versus the Jewish Community Center Association of Indianapolis, previous case law. Liability for defamation under Indiana law results in the following four elements are met. The speaker has made a communication with defamatory impugmentation. The speaker acted with malice. The speaker's statement was shared via publication. And the defendant party has suffered damages. Again, noting the same Newman versus Jewish Community Center case law. Mr. Lance's accusations against Mr. Helmsing are destructive, defamatory under Indiana law, and further detail below, Mr. Helmsing's demands that Mr. Lance and the board immediately retract these statements, cease and desist from making any further defamatory statements about Mr. Helmsing, and comply with all other demands set forth in this letter. Specifically, Mr. Helmsing hereby demands that Mr. Lance and the board comply with all the following. Mr. Lance and all other members of the board must immediately cease and desist from making any further verbal or written statements unlawfully defaming Mr. Helmsing. Within 15 days, days of the date of this letter being received, Mr. Lance must publicly retract the defamatory statements described above and apologize at the next public meeting of the board. See, within 15 days of the day of this letter, the board must censure Mr. Lance for Mr. Lance's defamatory statements as described above. This letter is not intended to provide a full citation of the facts or a complete review of the applicable law. Nothing contained or in or admitted from this letter should be deemed to be a limitation, restriction, or waiver of any of Mr. Helmsing's rights or remedies. Mr. Helmsing expressly reserves all of his legal and equitable rights and remedies, including the right to seek injunctive relief and recover monetary damages. I'd like to address some of the statements made if Madam President.
Go ahead.
I felt this issue was serious enough to address during this meeting, given that the statements were made during the last board meeting. So much so, that I'm missing my son's senior year banquet to be here tonight, instead sending my wife to have pictures for me to review at a later time. Mr. Lance's statements are damaging to my professional reputation. For the past 14 years of my nearly 30-year career, I've been a certified digital forensics examiner for my agency, now serving as the supervisor of that unit. This role has required extensive ongoing training and many certifications in different forensic disciplines. In this role, I have testified in federal and state courts as a subject matter expert in countless criminal trials. His completely baseless and reckless statements jeopardize my credibility and the public's trust regarding my ethics in this capacity. Part of this training included network intrusion training at the National Computer Forensics Institute through the United States Secret Service. So phishing attacks are an area I have some experience with. Phishing email attacks generally require an action by the user operating an attachment, opening an attachment or hyperlink. However, some phishing email attacks are now using AI-powered worms to exploit the user's email assistant by replicating prompts to steal personal data and launch campaigns without requiring a user's action to advance the cyber attack. A recent example of this would be the Morse-two worm, one for one of these attacks. Mr. Lance indicated on November 21st, 2024, my email account, as Mr. Lance indicated, my email account was a victim of a phishing email attack. Mr. Lance received an email due to his carbon copy on an email string during which I was coordinating health insurance benefits with my wife and between my employer and the school district. I've never had any direct correspondence with anyone other than my wife and the Director of Business Operations, Ms. Gina Burr, both of whom also received this phishing email. Mr. Lance indicated he attempted to contact me about the issue but received an out-of-office reply and received no further correspondence from me on this matter. The week prior to the incident, we had a death in our family, and I was on bereavement leave the week of this attack. The attack occurred while my spouse and I were actually receiving friends and family paying respects at the funeral home. Upon return to work, I had over 700 messages regarding this attack. I contacted, I was contacted by the school district's attorney, Mr. Shelley, regarding the incident. I provided him with all the information on this matter and the contact information for the city of Fort Wayne's IT provider for further information regarding the attack. Mr. Shelley stated that I need not to take any further action with Mr. Lance's message as he was investigating the matter. Upon also reviewing the October 28th board meeting, school board president Valerie Armstrong summarized that the results of an over $4,000 investigation paid by the school district found that the Attorney General of Indiana, the state's highest legal authority, had concluded no criminal actions in this matter. In summary, I find it horribly egregious that Mr. Lance, an elected member of the school board, would utilize his position to accuse a public servant of criminal activity, defaming their credibility through his baseless theories, supported by zero evidence. I would anticipate that his constituents who elected him to this position would expect more professional behavior. My hope in addressing this issue tonight would be that, if given the opportunity to speak further on the matter, Mr. Lance issue a retraction of all previous statements regarding me or my wife's involvement and make a public apology to us for the damage that has caused to our reputation. Thank you, Madam President. I hate to kind of sully what's been a very positive evening here. I've enjoyed watching all the positive improvements here around the school district and what you have to come. My wife has really enjoyed coming into the DeKalb Central family and I wish you the best of luck on everything you have planned.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Helmsing. Does anyone else have anything this evening? At this time, we will adjourn our meeting. I will read into the minutes that our next facility and operations advisory group meeting is December 4th at 6 o'clock PM here at Central Office. Our next regular board meeting is December 16th here again at Central Office. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can we, like, real quick for one question after this, like a mini-execution? Will we do that next board meeting?
We'll have to schedule.
Next board meeting, sorry.
We do not have an executive session scheduled for this evening, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Good evening, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for being here.